Alright, 6:31 and everyone will rise for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, good evening, everyone. Our first order of business this evening at 6:30 PM, we have a public hearing scheduled for ballot language. So under provides in context here, we do have a ballot question. On ballot or a town for the town ballot. Specifically related to the town hall renovation funding question that we're posing the question to voters to fund the project. And the language has already been approved, ballots have been printed. The purpose of this session is we do have an obligation to the town to host a public hearing in case anyone has any specific questions about this topic. So again, the language has been finalized, the ballot has been filed, it's been published absentee ballots are going out. You'll see, I think in the hallway somewhere, we got sample ballots. So again, this is just about questions about the specific item. Anyone have any questions? Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead, if you come up to the podium.
Hammer Steinhour, 19 Hills Run. Why would you ask for public comment after everything's printed and out the door?
This is a lot, an obligation that we have by law. We are required to hold a session to just answer questions for people ahead of voting if they have any specific questions about this item.
So it's not really about the wording.
It's not about the wording, no, just make sure everyone understands what's, what's on the ballot and what's not exactly. Any other questions? Comments from the council or the staff, anyone? Okay, it is 6:33 PM and we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, thank you. We'll move on to our town council business. Have all four councilors present this evening, this is their last meeting with four counselors. Next meeting, we will have a newly elected counselor join us. Moving on to approval of the following minutes from our council meeting on October 8th, 2024. Does anyone have any progressive edits to the draft minutes for that meeting?
Adam Chair, it's not a huge deal, but under counselor comments. It does mention that counselor comments number one was made by gentleman hand, number two doesn't have a counselor listed. So you might just want to change that to counselor Costello.
Thank you very much. Well, let me include that amendment in the motion, any other edits to these minutes? Alright, I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt the town council meeting minutes from October 8th, 2024 as written.
Second.
Thank you, good motion and second, all those in favor say aye, Jeff. With minutes.
So you've made a motion for ascertained.
Thank you, thank you. I will amend my motion, I will go ahead and make a motion to adopt the town council meeting minutes from October 8th, 2024 as amended.
Second.
Thank you, good motion and the second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
And I will abstain, I was asked from that meeting, so the motion passes three to zero with one exception. Moving on to our public hearing minutes from October 8th, 2024. Related to general assistance, I'm sorry. Any edits to these minutes? Alright, I'll put a motion on the table to adopt the meeting minutes from our public hearing on October 8th, 2024 as written.
Second.
Thank you, we have motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
And I will abstain, motion passes three to zero with one exception. Thank you, everyone, for running the show while I'm not on screen. Okay, moving on to the charter warrant from October 17th, 2024.
Adam Chair, I move we sign the charter warrant dated 10/17/2024 in the amount of $479,583.11.
Second, thank you. Any, just, we have a motion on the table, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the charter warrant, say aye, John, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John. Aye, motion passes four zero, thank you. Our next order of business, report on presentations, we have Mark Lawrence joining us this evening to share some information about the South Burack business block. So we do, I think, I'm kind of looking to stack to keep me honest here. The presentation that is included in the support doc is slightly outdated, is that correct? You updated it, okay, nevermind, we're good.
Good. Thank you, are you gonna bring up the PowerPoint? So thank you for having me here, this was at the suggestion of the town manager. That I come over and let you know what my client is doing, I should introduce myself first, I'm Mark Lawrence, I'm an attorney in town. And I represent a company called Casco Bay Assets LLC that owns a portion of the downtown business block. And I had Tim over and I think the deputy manager and the economic director to inform them of a project they were thinking about about two years ago. And they suggested when it gets closer, when it looks like they're going forward to just come over and do a presentation for you. Are you gonna fill the screen with it or?
Fill this far, I can go, I'm gonna share to Zoom as well.
Are you gonna be able to hear if I go over towards the, um, okay. No, no, you want me to take that?
No, Mark, we just want to make sure you can pick up on the owl, so here, take my mic.
Oh, do you want me to take this?
That won't reach.
Okay.
It's not so much for us, Mark, it's for your reporting.
So, um, Casco Bay Assets bought this portion of the downtown in 2000, the end of 2018, 2019. And it's essentially this part of the business block here. When they bought it, they realized that this building had a lot of deferred maintenance. But they're a company that's interested in renovating downtowns, there's been a lot of renovation going on around Maine and Augusta. Bitterford, Kittybump, ah, Kittery, all different towns. So they had a lot of interest in downtown areas and potential for renovation. So I can just present the plan kind of visually to you first of all. So if you look at this slide, this is what exists now, if you look at the next slide, this is what they want to restore the building to. And this was called Brulee painting in 1980, how the building originally existed. With one exception, if you go back to the first, there was a crown put on the building back in, I don't know, it was probably the 30s or 40s. That didn't exist on, in the Brulee version, but that would be restored. So chief among this, you notice this end of the building is missing. And this end of the building was destroyed back in the 1970s. So part of the project they're looking at is restoring that end of the building, that part of the building, if you go forward. Two slides, one more. So this was the fire, the destruction of that end of the building that occurred back in the 70s. And actually, the third floor collapsed, there was some kind of meeting room or, or office up there and the whole thing collapsed. Whoever owned it decided not to replace it, so that's been gone since the 1970s. We go to the next slide. So a couple of perspectives. So this project would involve 237 to, to 267 Main Street, it's not the entire business block. So if you wouldn't mind going back to the second slide. So it's essentially from the early bird down to the beginning of dangerous way. That's essentially where their ownership is, it doesn't involve the, the owners of the business block down to the end, okay? So if you go back to that slide. One more, okay? So Casco Bay Assets owns nearly all portions of this block with the exception of two first floor businesses separately owned. So if you think of this block as a giant jenga, when this block was created, it was owned by about 11 different owners. People on the first floor, people on the second floor, people on the stairway, people on the third floor. They all had easements to the walls, to the stairs and things like that. The prior owner of the building consolidated ownership, it was a gentleman named Russell Terrison, he consolidated ownership of that block. With the exception of two separately owned storefronts, 230, uh, 253 is a pizza shop. 261 is where the gem shop is now, used to be a frame shop. There actually used to be the back frame shop years ago. The first story owners, first story owners are very supportive of this project. CBA is privately funding all aspects of the project. And they're exploring ways to use tax credits to expand the scope of this project. Restoring a building like this is extremely expensive. They are old buildings, keeping them in, them in the state they're in is very, very expensive. So the federal government and the state government sets created tax credits to help finance these types of projects. So they're looking at these types of, this type of financing. The worst enemy of these, these old buildings is fire and water. Fire, this building has had fire many, many times in it throughout its existence. Also, water destroys the bricks, comes down, gets in the basement, dampness corrodes the bricks, corrodes the structure. So when they get it, they said there's a lot of things going on here and they began looking at a piecemeal. They decided that the best approach would be one huge project, one large project designed to address the major renovations. And try to use the tax credits. We go to the next slide. So in talking with Tim and talking with the assistant town manager and the then economic development director. There are ways that this project may impact the town and ways to coordinate with the town. And other quasi-government agencies that are worthwhile, putting out there and, and beginning a discussion of it. First of all, uh, it's a downtown development tip, is that what it's spelled?
Well, yeah, right now it's the omnibus tip.
Omnibus tip, there's a tip down there, which I had no idea existed. But if they put, and they have to put a minimum of a million dollars into this project in order to get the historic tax credit. That will generate tip money for the town, which the town can use for various things. They have started to address parking, there was no parking at this building for, there are 14 residential apartments, eight commercial. There was no parking, they've actually gone out and purchased parking behind the building. So now they've set up parking for all residential and all commercial units have at least one assigned parking. So that gets people off the street. They're also looking at the traffic pattern out back, Scott's Court, which goes into the right of the building is, is a public road. But it's not being a public road, it's a private road, goes back to that parking area. And that parking area connects to the parking that's between the library and Advesta. And when that development was done by the town and Mr. Terrison. The town actually got an 18 foot right away through there, I think for emergency vehicles. But they've been exploring opening up that right away, so delivery vehicles don't have to deliver in front of the building. And congest traffic, they can do it behind the building and then drive out, and that's something. Obviously, in the future, we need to discuss with the town and see if there's a way to do that to get that heavy traffic off the street. Utilities, so when investment came in, sewer and water was put in behind the building. These buildings, all of them, even the one they own and the ones they don't own are connected to sewer and water from the street. So whenever there's a problem with the sewer and water, it would require digging up Main Street. So one of the, some of the things they're looking at or talking about is potentially connecting through the investor connection. So that if, for the whole building, so if there was a problem, it wouldn't require digging up Main Street and congesting Main Street. And walkways, there's all kinds of walkways there around in the area, so they're willing to discuss with the town, I know on the revitalization committee. We talked about walkways, we talked about bicycle paths. They own actually three historic buildings, they own two this building and they own two others. One on Scott's Court and one on 229, 227 Main Street. And the 229, 227 has a vacant area in front of it, which they would, if the town was considering doing like bicycle parking areas and things like that. They would certainly talk to the town about that. So they wanted me to bring together that part of the revitalization plan is getting the town and the businesses to work cooperatively together. They're more than willing to have discussions with the town about ways they can look at this project that are gonna help the town meet its goals. Obviously, this is a private project, it's private property, but they're willing to, to work with the town on some of these goals. We flip to the next slide. So, uh, Casco Bay Assets' goal for the building when they bought it, and their goals now is to preserve the historic character. They don't want, I mean, you see in ports that historic buildings being torn down, new ones being built, that's not what they like to invest in. They want to preserve the historic character, they want to provide for the long-term health of the building. And this is difficult because buildings are like people, they have to be able to afford their own health insurance. And if the building doesn't generate enough income to do its long-term maintenance, eventually the building will deteriorate. One of the problems with this building is that because it had so many segmented owners, it was difficult to get the owners to agree to do major renovations on the business. They want to increase safety both in the building and around the building, they've already started doing some of that. Part of this proposal is to add additional residential units in the building. And that's how they're gonna get to providing the long-term health for the building, if they can have the building generate more money. There's vacant areas in the building that are currently unrented. If they rebuild the end of the structure, they could probably do two additional residential units there. If they do an add-on on the back of where my conference room or my office is. They can potentially add two and a half spaces there, so they can, they're kind of looking at the potential of nine additional rental units. And I know in some of the studies you've had in the downtown, one of the things that have been identified is lack of rentals in the downtown. Particularly lack of studio rentals, one-room rentals, lot rentals. A lot of the units in their building are one-room lot, they're kind of what I would call workforce housing. A housing that's affordable for people who kind of work in the area, so that's what they're looking to add to the building. They want to definitely maintain the nine commercial storefronts in the front of the building. I think the prior owner had looked at potentially putting an elevator in for the second or third floor. But that would mean losing one of the commercial storefronts, they really don't want to do that. They want to keep that historic look. There are the next slide. So these are the project steps and it's gonna get, not confusing, but it's gonna, you're gonna see how much has to go into this. So back in 2020, they did the architectural design, it's done by Dean Reicherson initially. Who designed the renovations in downtown Kittery and the architectural development in downtown Kittery. It was him that encouraged them to consider a tax credit as a way of funding this project. So they're looking, and they have been looking extensively into a federal and state historic tax credit. Which is about 45% when you add the two together, it's a 45% tax credit on the project. They hired Hanson Historic Consulting, Scott Hanson is probably one of the best-known historic consult, tax credit consultants in the state. He's probably done about 80 or so projects around the state. So he's been in since 2020 and he is now working on preparing what's called phase one, the evaluation of significance. So what has to be done is there are two tax, the two historic districts in the town of South Burack. And they're very different districts, one is the South Burack Historic District, which is solely for zoning purposes. And in your zoning ordinances, it zones essentially the exterior of the building, what people can do with the exterior. There is also a federal, that came about in 1999, there's a federal district called the South Burack Village Historic District. It was created by application to the National Park Service in 2010 by the town of South Burack. And a larger area of South Burack was designated essentially a historic district. And what that does, it allows anybody doing renovations in that district to apply for a tax credit. It doesn't put zoning restrictions on the buildings. All it says is if you're going to apply for this tax credit, we're going to have a say in what you do to the building. Okay, so this is the evaluation of significance that will go in initially, and it's essentially an overview of the project. The National Park Service will say, take a look at this and say, we like this idea, we don't like this idea. Okay? There's also an affordable housing tax credit, that's relatively minor, I think it's like 5%. If they put solar on the building and do some energy efficiencies, there are some, um, some potential for tax credits there. But the historic tax credit is the big one, if they get that, they can greatly expand the scope of the project, how much renovation, how much restoration they could do on the building. And believe it or not, I never knew this, there's a market for reselling the tax credit. So if you get a $400,000 tax credit, you can sell it on a market and they give you upfront 75% or something of the, of the tax credit. So you get 300,000 in cash upfront to fund your project, so there's various ways it can be structured. Once they get through that first phase one, the evaluation of the tax credits. Then they're gonna have an idea of what the scope, how far they're gonna go on this project and what they're gonna try to include. And then they come to the town for planning board approval. And they also, if they get the historic tax credit, they have to go back to the National Park Service with a detailed plan. And it's called the description of the rehabilitation, so not only do they have to get planning board approval. But they have to get National Park Service approval for the entire plan. And they're very specific, they say if these types of shingles are on the building, you have to replace exactly the same material, exactly the same design. You have to have it essentially restored for at least five years, exactly the way it was in that, in that. So assuming they do get the, the credit, they get the approval from the town. Project could start, my guess is you're probably looking at two years for them to complete it. And then they have to go back, once they complete it, they have to request from the National Park Service certification that they did everything they were supposed to do. So they have to submit pictures of the windows, pictures of the framing, pictures of the shingles, pictures of everything. And the National Park Service determines whether or not they qualify for the tax credit. And that's the process they're going through, but this determination that's going right, on right now will determine how far they can go. How much they can invest in the building to, to preserve its future. Their goal is to get it to a point where, you know, it's good for the next 20 to 40 years without major restoration. We go to the next slide, so that's, if they're successful, it'll be restored to that look. There's talk about whether the chimney would be, need to be restored, it'd be a faux chimney, obviously not used. But there for historic purposes with a crown that exists there. So that's essentially the little project, you can skip, if you have any answer, any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mark, I have a question, just kind of aware, Casco Bay at, in terms of, you just kind of laid out kind of like a full end-to-end process. Is this, where, where are we at currently?
So they are at the point of submitting that phase one, that.
Okay.
Part one to the National Park Service. They've had a completed architectural study of the building, they may have to do some tweaks on that depending upon what they ultimately decide to do. And they're talking to funders right now, they have three potential funders. And depending upon how that funding is structured and how the tax credits come through, that's gonna determine how far in the restoration they can go. So they have essential needs and kind of nice things they'd like to do, like lighting in the parking lot out back, you know, things like that. But they're not sure how far they'll be able to go.
Okay.
Under this project.
And then this is just a question for myself, you said that there's two businesses that are kind of part of that chunk, but that are not. And it's the former, that place.
What are, if you do, go back to the first.
I just missed the, the first one.
So it is the pizza place and this green one here.
Okay, thank you.
So in order to get the tax credit, we have to get a letter of agreement from these two. And I've had preliminary discussions with them, they seem very proactive and very supportive. Part of this project I didn't mention, if they do the official. Part of this project I didn't mention, if they do the additional units is. And it's going to be good for the building and good for some Casco Bay, is they will have to sprinkle the whole building. Put a sprinkler system in there. So it won't apply to this part of the building, but it'll apply to this part of the building. And obviously that'll increase the safety tremendously in the building. But they're going to need to coordinate that with the fire department, how it's done. And the town, and they would have to go through these two units to sprinkle those two.
Okay. Council, any other questions?
No, thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mark, I think, good timing, I'm sure probably why Tim suggested you come this evening, good timing, given all the other work we have going on, so um, appreciate you giving us that. Do you have any, um, you know, questions for Mark before we close out? Okay. Thank you, Mark. Okay, um, that takes us to public comment, is there anyone who'd like to speak about anything that's not on the agenda? I'll open up to the room bar, some lunch at Zoom if anyone wants to.
Member Steinauer nineteen-hundred-five, I just have a question on the, the uh, council payable warrant from ten-three. There was a thirty-six hundred dollar payment to Great Works Internet. Is that where we get our internet for Town Hall and the rest of us suffer with Comcast?
I'm looking to Jen.
It's you answering questions.
Internet and phones for the buildings.
Okay, is there anything in the works for like the rest of us to not have to have Comcast?
Red fiber for this building.
I know.
Good point.
Okay, so I take it that's enough, thank you.
Any else in the room, public comment or anything that is on the agenda? Anyone on the phone? Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business number one, downtown revitalization adoption. Bear with me really quick while I find the. So um, over the past, what, year and a half or so, we've been working on the downtown revitalization plan, um, established the downtown revitalization committee. That document, um, which. This here um, is many, many pages and was sent to the state and approved with no changes. And so now that we have official approval from the state, um, formal action needs to be taken by the council to officially adopt. This document as an official town document, so that's what our business is here this evening, am I missing anything? Anyone have any questions or comments on? Just before we go. Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion um, to adopt the downtown revitalization plan as presented and accepted by the state of Maine.
Second.
Thank you, we have a, uh, sorry, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye, Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four-zero. I just want to say thank you again to um, Melissa for stepping in as the chair of the Revitalization Committee. As well as all of the people who are super involved in that process, uh, it's going to be a treat for us moving forward. Right. Moving on to number two, CACs grant. Apologies to everyone, um.
Two-thirty-seven.
Thank you so much. All right, um, okay, so unfinished business number two, CACs grant, so here's a little bit of context here, so um, in line with implementing our downtown revitalization plan. A bicycle and pedestrian plan does fit in the scope of the work defined in that downtown plan. CACs, which stands for the Kittery Area Comprehensive Transportation System, has a grant available that we may qualify for. And um, will be voted on in their upcoming November sixth meetings, the CACs organizations meeting in a couple of weeks. And this grant could be between fifty-five thousand dollars and seventy-five thousand dollars, and the town would each match ten percent of that. Um, and so essentially this is money somewhat on the table to move this forward, correct?
Yep.
Any other information or you guys would like to share?
Um, this is a project that DeCarlo was put together. Utilizing downtown revitalization plan as the first step moving forward. Um, we'd always talked about in the downtown revitalization committee. And group to talk about low hanging fruit, so this is the first with low hanging fruit. Um, and fortunately that when DeCarlo got here, he hit the ground running. And decided making Paul, him and Paul got a hold of SMPDC and determined it was money, so. DeCarlo, we want to come up and just say a few words on this and remind the council what the project is and what it would do for us.
Uh, absolutely, thank you so much for having me uh, this evening, um, so I would love to take credit for this, but I do have to give a lot of credit to Paul. Um, our special uh, uh, special uh, project planner, um, and uh, basically what this does is that um, this pulls together. Um, what's going to be our comprehensive plan, the downtown revitalization plan, um, and an open space plan, um, that is currently being developed. Um, headed up by the conservation committee and the SMPDC. Um, so basically what it allows us to do is um, to map out. How we can make our downtown areas and more than the downtown areas, our entire town, a little bit more safer for pedestrians and bicycles to traverse. Um, and so they'll have actionable items that we can implement, uh, that'll come directly from this. Um, and that's the, the next step forward of having shovel-ready projects. Um, and what's important about having shovel-ready projects is that not necessarily that you yourselves have to fund it. But when we go after those funds for grants and everything, um, they need those projects to be shovel-ready to say. Hey, who has a project so we can fund, we can go after those funds and they can be, um, we can actually do those, those projects and have implementation. Um, and so this is another part of pulling all of our plans together, um, and making sure that we're implementing and not just, you know, just discussing about how making this town look better.
I didn't expect that we'd be rolling with downtown revitalization stuff so quickly.
Yeah.
Great. Um, anyone have any questions for DeCarlo or Tim?
Um, I have a question about um, the grant process.
Sure.
Is, once we're awarded the grants that you're going to get for us, is there an expiration date of how fast we have to use that money? And the reason I ask is the pedestrian and bicycleing system connects to the traffic lights, connects to the comprehensive plan. So if we're going to go after this grant and there's a possibility that we're not going to be able to be shovel-ready to do it. Because we have other projects that are hoping on. Is it beneficial to maybe? I don't want to say wait on getting the grant, but maybe wait on getting the grant if we're not going to be able to use it.
So it's a great question, um, with this project, this is actually a shovel-ready project to do the bike pedestrian uh, plan. Um, the way that is granted is directly from the funds from CACs, it's not, it's not necessarily a grant, they have funds themselves. And they need to allocate it before the end of the year. Um, and so uh, as a part of that, they said, you know, they asked the different towns, who has a project that they want to begin working on? Um, this goes directly into our two-thirty-six project, um, this is a plan we want done before. That project kicks off with engineering, and so they'll have this study and these plans ready for that project. So when we get funding from the state and federal government, uh, possibly from, um. They can, they know what projects we want to do and how to incorporate that into this portion of the project. And so that's why we're kind of um, gungho on this one, is because the sooner we can get this um, running. Is that they can use that data into our actual implementation projects that are already coming. So um, our two-thirty-six project has a kickoff from the state in February. And so uh, the, the timeline for this is in November sixth is when they're voting on the funding. E- exactly, and then um, exactly when they're voting on the funding, they're also voting on the RFP. And then the RFP is going to go out in a couple of days after that. And so that, this is a project that's going to immediately start going right in at the beginning of November. And that's why they've asked us to make sure that we have our portion of the funding ready to go, and so it goes very, very smoothly. And that's how it goes with this type of grant funding, is that as long as you, we have our ducks in a row, then the other money just. Is able to come in very quickly and we can get things done. Um, but if we do not have the plans in place and the projects ready to go up to that point where. Uh, we have everything in place except for the funding, then we have to do all the backwork of waiting. Um, and so if we weren't this far, I would have said, you know, we have to wait until we have our ducks in a row. But it just so happens that we do have our ducks in a row right here, and we're just taking advantage of any funding that's out there.
Well, follow-up on, on DeCarlo's statement, so this is a, a planned study. To develop a plan of how and what we would lay the bike path out of the walking path, we start to build it. It's a study to, to develop a plan. That became possible because of the great work Melissa and her committee did during the downtown revitalization, and so you're seeing. You know, from the conceptual time I talked about it, my, my interview when I came here. To us talking about it as a council and teams getting it implemented and developed, and then all the meetings getting it done, you're seeing the proof of labor of this plan. As it's being adopted tonight, you're seeing the work now of us moving forward already because of this. So already this plan will have given us a fifty to seventy thousand dollar one-time study grant. To determine our bike path and walking path, that's what this was designed for, exactly what we're doing. So, that's correct.
Yeah, correct, and just as, as this is an implementation of your downtown revitalization. Your downtown revitalization is actually the implementation of your comprehensive plan that you're having a hearing in, in November. So you, you've already started on implementation of all of these plans and that's kind of the point, we want to not have the plans on the shelf. We want to actually get them going and see results in real time.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I totally understand, so as part of the downtown revitalization process in the plan, we said. Bicycle, pedestrian is focused. That, that's something we want to focus on, because we have that in our plan, that makes the situation shovel-ready, is your understanding?
Yes.
Okay, and then we can come now, now have that opportunity to be able to get additional funding from CACs. To figure out the details of the bicycle and pedestrian plan.
Correct.
To then inform all of the rework that's going to happen downtown.
Yes.
Okay, I understand.
Absolutely, and then um, by having this plan, you'll have your, uh, your projects then can then get to the shovel-ready stage. And then we can start to go after those in- individual grants for each of those individual projects. So if we're saying, hey, just Portland Street, we want to do something, um, that comes out of this plan, we'll already have that study already done. And so we'll go on to the phase two, which is engineering, because it's always goes, it goes plan, engineering, implementation. And so now you've done most of all your plans, now we're getting into starting thinking about engineering and, and funding about engineering, and then you go to implementation.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions, John?
Um, so, CACs. I feel like we talked about CACs when we were talking about the bike project, is that correct?
Correct.
We got funding for that, right? Is this from the same bucket or is this a whole different CACs? Dollars?
Different, same organization, different bucket, um, each year they have um, a pot of funding for plans and studies. Um, and we're just coming to the end of the calendar year, and they're asking, well, who, who needs a plan done? And we raised our hand and said, we'll take that.
So it won't, it won't impact what's already.
No.
That project that's already kind of.
No.
Ready to go, okay, um. And again, I'm just going to beat the dead horse. The shovel-ready is what's throwing me.
Is a confusing term.
Yeah.
I understand what you're, what you're meaning, like ready, like a project like ready to go, right? Um. Uh, but when I'm hearing shovel-ready, I'm thinking, uh, we'll have a bike path uh, springing next year, and so that's what.
Yeah.
So I'm hinging on what Tim said, it's, this dollars would be just for.
The plan.
The plan.
Yes.
Over the, to, to study it, so.
Yes.
Our, this said, hey, we want this. This money would go towards us saying, this is how we could do it potentially.
Yes.
And then you guys do your dreaming and come to us again and say, this is what our dream looks like.
Correct.
Uh, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, with that, uh, I would like to request that um. That when you're doing the planning, that I'm sure it probably already is, but I want to say it aloud is. I'd love to be able to um, monetize that or have a dollar amount for the public to understand. In my mind, I'm saying bike paths, it's just clear weather, no big deal, I want to be able to have. The public know exactly what the upkeep cost, what the ongoing cost is once we do this. Because this is great, having a plan, but having the year five, six, seven, twenty. And understanding that our bike paths are, cause need to be upgraded or taken care of. I'd just like that to be a part of the planning, does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely, I, I always tell people, you know, the easiest part is the capital expenditure to build it. But the most expensive one is to take care of it.
Yeah.
And so to think ahead of how you're going to take care of this new thing that you're building, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. Um, all right, I think, I think we're good questions, I'll just clarify real quick before we kind of move forward, so the, thank you so much, Paul. Um, so the, the grant amount could be anywhere between fifty-five thousand and seventy-five, sorry, fifty-five thousand and seventy thousand dollars. And it would require a ten percent match by the town, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve. That the town manager signed them, I'm already of understanding with CACs to be considered for the grant we discussed. And additionally prove the ten percent matching budget no more than seven thousand dollars, that's about ten percent of seventy thousand to be paid out of the transit tip.
Second.
Thank you, the motion and a second. Questions, discussion, anybody?
I just want to say it sounds like a really great thing, it's really nice, I think, for the public and for us and as a town to be able to see. A lot of the money and time and effort that we're spending on all these big projects to be able to come in and. Start being put, put into action, you know, so I thank you to the town staff and DeCarlo, this is really exciting to see.
I agree one hundred percent, it's so nice to know that we put this giant book together and we're immediately starting to take. That into consideration and start doing things, so Paul, I think you're on the phone, and DeCarlo, thank you so much for finding this opportunity for us, um. And we just appreciate that. All right, um, oh, Paul, I think you raised your hand, do you want to add something? We have a motion on the table.
No, I'm sorry, I was just saying thanks, bye.
Thanks, Paul. All right, you have a motion on the table, um, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye, Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four-zero. Okay, so moving on to new business number one, uh, proclamation, it is municipal officials appreciation month, um, it seems a very. Uh, appropriate month for this to be the case because we're heading up on our, obviously president election in a couple of weeks. And as we all know, our town clerk, um, and our town clerk's offices across the state have been working really hard to prepare us for that election. Um, so um, I'm going to go ahead and have a couple of things, I have a letter from Secretary of State Shinavellows. And I also have the proclamation, um, both are included in these four docs, if it is okay with everyone, I'm going to read the letter from Shinavellows. Just um. Equally um, kind of praising the clerk's office, um, whereas the proclamation is a little more formal. Um, but it is written in, or sorry, included in the four docs, so. On October second, twenty twenty-four, Shinavellows wrote to all municipal clerks of Maine, thank you for your outstanding and dedicated public service to the citizens of Maine municipalities statewide. Your contributions to the excellent administration of the electoral process in cities, towns and plantations throughout our great state. Has resulted in outstanding public confidence in municipal, state and federal elections. During each and every election, you have ensured fair access to voting, trained and educated election workers identified needed. Electoral reforms and promoted effective voting practices in your municipalities and beyond. Your collective focus is democracy and the fair and proper successful management of our elections with commitment and integrity. Thank you again for the work that you do each day and your perseverance in making Maine's elections safe and secure for your community and beyond. Congratulations on receiving the national recognition of the Spirit of America Foundation Award for Municipal Clerks and Valid Clerks, take care, Shinavellows. And then there is a more, much more formal proclamation saying much of the same thing, um, to follow that. Um, and so, we just want to take a moment to appreciate our town clerk and all of our staff and all of the folks that are involved in running our. Election here in a couple of weeks, um, we couldn't do this without you. And just want to make a motion that the town council signs a very formal proclamation honoring our town clerk and municipal officials. Ben?
You need to, you, you, two dots, you need to read.
Uh, and I will also read the proclamation, I was trying to save everybody some time, sorry. Um, okay, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to, or sorry, I'll read the proclamation first. Um, the formal proclamation reads, whereas Spirit of America Foundation cherishes municipal officials' help with its program. And created, quote, municipal officials appreciation month in two thousand twenty-four. Dedicated nationally to municipal clerks and valid clerks to express gratitude. Whereas municipal officials make personal sex. Whereas municipal officials make personal sacrifices to serve constituents and deserve more public recognition and respect than they generally receive. Municipal clerks are some of the most dedicated and generous members in our communities, are almost always involved in a community event or civic organization within a town, and most of the time are doing work on their own personal time. Whereas ballot clerks serve at each polling place throughout election day, ensure the election process goes smoothly, and are vital to democracy. Whereas Town South Borough much appreciates the services provided by its municipal clerks, ballot clerks, and municipal officials. Now therefore, we have proclaimed that the Town of South Borough, Maine, designated October two thousand twenty-four as Town of South Borough Municipal Officials Appreciation Month and urges our citizens to show their gratitude to their municipal officials and especially to the municipal clerks and ballot clerks for the, for all they do to make this a better community. Signed and sealed this twenty-second day of October to vote for." We will sign that, so. Tyne, thank you so much for everything you do for the town. I know that you've had a lot on your plate and it's not over yet, but um, yeah, just thank you. Um, all right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to the town council to adopt and sign the proclamation proclamation. Um, uh, creating, I guess, municipal officials appreciation month in two thousand twelve, in two thousand twenty-four in South Borough. Um, and to sign that as I just read.
Third.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of signing the proclamation, say aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. All right, um, moving on to news number two. Uh, so just looking ahead in December is kind of a funny month with the way our typical meeting schedule falls. Our second meeting, because we typically meet second and fourth meeting of the month, our second meeting falls on Christmas Eve. I'm quite certain none of us want to meet on Christmas Eve. So I think the suggestion is that we shift our schedule a little bit in December instead of meeting um on the tenth and twenty-fourth, which is what our normal schedule would be. We'll kind of meet somewhere in the middle and meet on the seventeenth instead. That offers us the ability to also get our audit presentation, which is this typical thing that happens in December. Um, so I have no concerns with with that suggestion. Do you guys have any concerns about um warrants or anything like that? The usual will come in if we need to sign anything. Quick, kind. All right, anyone have any concerns with that schedule for the motion? All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion that the motion to cancel the meetings for December tenth and December tenth and December twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, and instead of scheduling one meeting for Tuesday, December seventeenth, be held here, six thirty P M, town hall. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Diane sent up plenty of reminders because I'm going to blow that one.
Yeah, hold my trigger. Um, all right, all all those in favor, say aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. Do you want December seventeenth? And moving on to number three, civil public hearing for medical caregiver retail store license renewal, sorry, for Pi Chao. Uh, so in the past couple of years, the town council has adapted ordinance changes to specifically to medical marijuana businesses requiring a public hearing um in front of the town council when their license is up for renewal. This is just triggering that process. Um, and so we need to just the 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 activity taken here this evening to schedule a public hearing um for the license renewal for that business. Um, so I look at the calendar. Our next meeting will be the twelfth. I know also I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but number four, we're also trying not scheduling a potential board assessors meeting for that same evening, which is also the first evening that we have a new counselor to. I suggest that this public hearing get pushed beyond the, like, the second meeting in November. Or do you have any concerns about?
Yeah, I do. There's a time essence issue.
Okay.
They their application's been, they've been, they started their process in August, but because it wasn't complete, I wouldn't allow it to come.
Okay.
So I kicked it back two or three times. They finally got it all done. So if we could do it, there should be, I don't think this is a big issue, and the board of assessment is only one or two.
Okay.
Um, I don't believe it's, it's not a big issue for the board of assessment, I should be all just expecting.
Okay, so from a tiny perspective, we want to try to speak within on the twelfth. So I'll go ahead and uh make a motion to schedule a public hearing for um the medical caregiver retail store license renewal application for Pi Chao, scheduling that for November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four at six thirty P M here in town hall. Any?
Second.
Thank you. You have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, understanding, and I'm okay with doing it. This is the second one we've had where it's been time of essence because these guys are doing their diligence and doing their work. Correct? It's not on us, it's on the business owner.
It it is, but this is the first round with the new ordinance.
I understand though.
So, but I say.
Right, and and I'm good with doing it tonight. I just don't want to see this carry on. It's always a time essence because they're not doing the paperwork, right?
Right, so we we'll, we only have one more store left. They're working on this. The third store is gone. Um, and so I, we take some of the responsibility because we probably should have, with this was the first time, we should have probably sent a formal notification out, and we did not. However, it's not on that, it's not on us, it's on them, but in the spirit of being uh good partners and good team uh team members, we could have sent the letters out. We didn't. We were busy doing a hundred other things. Um, so just to be fair to them. But they've all been aware, but but I just, and in that answer, I just want to say that um in this particular instance, Pi Chao has been absolutely a pleasure to work with. Anything I've asked, they've done. Now back and did it again and fixed it, and they got tired of me making corrections. But but they have been absolutely a pleasure to deal with, no question about it. They reapologize and so.
But it's all good, but I just, the look, the look where it was to me, I just want to make sure that was out publicly, didn't it?
Yeah, and and in the future, next year, um, in March, we'll send reminding letters out. Even though it'll be, we'll send reminder letters out to say, hey, please.
So we can chalk that up too. This is a new process that we've inserted, and everybody's kind of learning and adjusting to what that looks like. Okay, um, we have a motion on the table. Any other discussion or questions? Sorry, anybody? All those in favor of um the public hearing on the twelfth, say aye. Beth?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. And uh next, we have um similar similar agenda items to schedule a board of assessors meeting for our next um council meeting as well. Uh, with this one, I have, I just have a question because this is going to be our first meeting with new counselors. And I do, I mean, speaking for myself, the the role that we play as a board of board assessors is not something, is not a cat lever often, right? They they come up infrequently. So I'm sort of wondering if there, is it worthwhile to maybe push this, push this one out to me? So we have a chance to ground the new counselor on this role that they're going to be playing?
Uh, this this can be because of the statute of limitations, requirements for appeals.
Fair.
And so Burner has formally requested this. I, they're simple, the small one, but I think because of the clock, they had to come in front of you.
Yeah, fair. Okay, maybe then what we can try to do um is try to connect the new counselor maybe with Burner. Kind of that, just so they kind of know what they're up to.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to hold a board assessors meeting um prior to the September town council meeting on November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, to be held immediately after the public hearing for Pi Chao. I don't, thank you, wait a second. Is that, I don't, I don't know how best to phrase that.
Immediately after the public hearing.
Okay, I'm saying to follow the public hearing.
Um, okay, good. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. That is care of all our business for this evening. I would hand over to Tim and Ben to update us on the town manager report. Thank you, everyone.
Um, the madam chair and members of the council, under the managing board business, the highway about the irrigation of the court field in box has been all been winterized. The stream milling from this year's road work is being used to fill in the shoulders on the sides of the roads. Police departments had six arrests, five accidents, forty-seven traffic stops. Flight abandoned sixteen calls in the last two weeks, uh, with three hundred and forty-three yet to date. Their annual fleet of required state inspections and maintenance on all vehicles will be happening at the end of this month in preparation for the winter month. So to get everybody to speak, every year, by federal standards, every fire truck we have has to get tested and certified to be a fire truck. And a lot of truck has to get tested, so that goes through a process every year where you have to hire a third outs, an outside agency, a third third-party agency, they have to come in. And they spend four or five hours testing each pumper and one whole day testing the ladder, putting weights on it, making sure and then they certify it so that it actually is considered a fire truck when you take it to the fire. It's just helpful, one of those things. Um, code enforcement, uh, the code enforcement also is working remotely. Uh, the fire chief is still assisting in the field with inspections and meetings. Um, they've issued six building permits and the fire chief's on the ton, ten building codes inspections. Thank you. You do that by whom? Who are you? Planning economic development. Bike and pedestrian plan, CAX, um, will vote on November sixth to approve the use of the CAX funds to hire consultants to complete a study plan. The plan will connect our comprehensive plan, downtown revitalization plan, open space plan, and give the town options for implementation related to the walkability and transportation by bicycle. Uh, the main street signal intersection DOT project, the state deciding design phase of the intersection. Now, we begin, the town will begin to be consulted after kickoff meeting will be scheduled in February twenty twenty-five. Parking and wayfinding study is being explored in conjunction with this project to ensure that downtown area has appropriate parking mounts and wayfinding. Um, the planning board will meet on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four at six P M for a workshop, but different subject, I write it together. I'll talk to the workshop, the process improvement, and we'll begin to set the template on how to change, how to change the processes through public process.
Hey, Tim, sorry, can I ask you?
Yes.
Question, that you said something about um M T O T is starting, but in in February, there's a kickoff meeting planned, and something about parking, I was like doing a parking study, is that where this data is going to facilitate?
Oh, we're, we're gonna, you, you want to, to call to speak to that.
All right, thank you.
Sure, um, so uh as a part of the two thirty-six study, um, we are well aware that there are some parking concerns. Um, not necessarily amount, but maybe amount, but definitely wayfinding. Um, and so in order to make sure that we're addressing any concerns that are coming up, um, I thought it was a great idea to make sure this is another plan that's going to be incorporated into the intersection project to have a wayfinding parking study, um, and seeing how much that would cost, um, just so we can know what we're working with. Um, that parking wayfinding study will predominantly be on the main street, but also um lower main street as well to make sure that our whole downtown revitalization is um ensured that we have enough parking and wayfinding. So that's what this one. Yeah.
Diane, hurry.
I just want to say, so nice to have a professional planner who thinks ahead.
Right.
Great.
Yeah, so, and then, so the the next step in that, while I get here, why don't you come on top of the planning process for the planning board? So that, that, that's a huge piece that we've had, as you know, folks. We've had issues with this going back two, three, four years, right? Um, both businesses talking about complaints of how their processes go, so I'll turn it over to that one.
Sure, absolutely. Um, so as we all know, when we get to the hearing stage for any type of amendments, um, the hearing processes are really not built out for workshopping ideas, um, language and 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 such. It's usually you, you get a document, it has wording on it, and people are saying, no, I don't like it, or yes, we do, or we're going to pass it or not, or make small amendments. Um, what I am putting before the planning board for their consideration is a a public process is basically how they workshop ideas and language of amendments um and or uh process changes. And so um in in order to, uh, once they work through that, that process then becomes um very transparent, and everyone knows that process is occurring. And so they know if something is coming up, it would be advertised appropriately and worked on um a long time before you even get to the hearing process. And all those questions that we always have on any amendment or any process change are answered before you enter the um uh the legislative process. Um, and in order to, and one, one of the benefits of that is that um it 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 becomes not only a lot transparent, but a lot of the the kinks are worked out of um how does this structurally work or this process works, or what's the problem with our our zoning ordinance or our other process that this is going to cascading effects? You can see all that during this workshopping process where it's not, um, the hearing process isn't really set up for that. Um, so this is similar to if you were in a a larger legislative body, it goes through a workshopping, uh, you know, council, and then they work it out of what's going to ultimately be before them for any type of legislative session, so.
So this is a a workshop between the applicant and the planning board?
No, so this is actually workshop just with the planning board on how they would like their process to be structured. Um, and so this is a chance for them without the pressure of an applicant being before them or um a member of um a residence being before them, asking them to actually do something that they can just work on their internal process um by themselves in a in a very public way. And so all the kinks of that can be ironed out. And so when you do get a um a a topic before them, like, hey, we want to change this part of zoning or something, they already have a process to follow that ensures that they're thinking about all the the costs and benefits of that change.
I think that sounds fabulous. I think as much kind of um guidance, guidance and and structure we can add to these processes, especially when we have turnover awards and stuff really often, and that's fabulous.
Yeah, and it it was designed to directly from that, just my experience of that of, of, you know, you you never know. That tomorrow's might might want to resign, and you get a brand new person in, and they have to come up to speed and come up to, okay, how are we making decisions here in South Borough? But if you have this process already laid out, then that process can just been like, okay, here it is. This is our, this is what we follow, and this is how we we get to making decisions.
Thank you. I don't know where we left off.
Thank you, Paul.
Come on, I'm trying.
Um, at transfer station, we handed out nine hundred and sixty-eight new stickers as an issue to the line.
At the library, two weeks ago, the carpets and furniture were cleaned, and that was paid for by the friends of the library. Last week, the windows were taken care of and cleaned. On Wednesday, October sixteenth, author Mary Build from Bridge to Maine, who was recently awarded the twenty twenty-three Award of Achievement for Contributions to Aviation by the International Organization of Woman Pilots, the ninety-nines, visited the library, and she spoke about her new book, Finding Myself in Aviation. The library will be open for Halloween, and they're going to participate in trick-or-treating and providing out candy. Recreation, soccer season has wrapped up, and they have lots of good positive feedback on that program this year. At the seniors, they had a matter of balance class is starting on October twenty-ninth, and that will run through November twenty-first. Um, this is contracted by Cornerstone B and A, and it will run twice a week for four weeks by no charge. The Halloween Hunting Lunch is on October thirtieth with costumes and prizes and spaghetti meatball lunch. Assessing, the municipal evaluation report has been submitted to the state, as well as the tree growth report has been submitted to the state. And as we talked about, board of assessors meeting will be scheduled for November twelfth. She will have one, two, three amendments for uh you, for folks to review. The town clerk's office has been very busy with voter registration, absentee ballots, and election preparation. In my area, I've had nine business meetings, twenty-nine staff meetings. The foreclosure notices will be going out this Thursday, as of today, we have seven accounts that have not paid their twenty twenty-three taxes, and the actual portability on that is December fifth. The resilience grant, um, the resilience workshop will happen this Thursday up here on the twenty-fourth, uh, from six to eight. DeCarlo and I will be hosting that with two staff from Southern Main Planning Development to get some input from the community, see how we should spend that seventy-five thousand dollar grant. And I have scheduled a verbal GTO class on de-escalation, and that class will be held uh March eighteenth at the community center. It's an all-day um training, and once we have our staff headcount, I will open it up to local communities and towns. And the town hall is also going to be participating in trick-or-treat this year. Brittany Spencer has offered to decorate the front, and she's going to be out there handing out papers.
I don't care, I have something you wrote before. Yeah, okay. Just I forgot to add the summer coming for.
Just I forgot to add the center for something. Dog licensing is open, yay. Um, there was a little uh change to the online process, which um. Makes it so you have to upload a copy of your RAB certificate during the registration process. Yeah, those dogs done for January twenty-third versus the multiple.
Thank you so much. Any, anything else from Steph? Okay, all right, um, we can move on to.
Uh, just one, we have an election coming up next week. It'd be great. No, we have, sorry, November fifth. Um, I would really love it with both parties and anybody running. November sixth, when I drive home, I'm not to see what I see all around our town. I would love to see on the sign list by the evening of November sixth. So I would ask anybody that could be part of that to, let's get South Borough back to like the looking beautiful side streets and flowers and what we got. That's all I have.
Thank you. Jeff? Okay, Melissa?
Well, good.
Melissa, okay. I have meeting um on the election note, election day. As John mentioned, November fifth, our polls are going to be open from seven A M to eight P M across the street at Central School. Uh, so that will be a change, and I hope we have excellent voter turnout. Uh, this verbal judo class, I would like to attend. Uh, that sounds amazing. Um. I was speaking with somebody over the weekend who recently got married here, and he was. It's so thrilled with how that went. It was, it was really lovely um to have that, the conversation I had with this gentleman, so, Diane, that's for you. Uh, and then I'll just do a plug, um, because I guess we have more meeting ahead of that, but the Sound of Music, the District Musical and Marshall High School is coming up. November fifteenth and fifteenth, seven P M both evening, and then also November twenty-second and twenty-third, but there is also a matinee on the twenty-third. Check it out, it's um K through twelve, and hopefully will be um great turnout, and my daughter also. Um, that's all I have for my comments. Any, any last comments from anybody? You wanna join?
Madam Chair, I will adjourn.
Second, all those in favor of joining, say aye.
Aye.
Very answered. Thank you, everyone.